Morning Leonard, is anybody else on?
You're the only member so far in the committee. Hear me sir?
Yes, I did.
Oh yes, there's...
Chair is doing the test... Chair is doing testimony at 8:30 or...
Who?
9:30. The chair?
Yes.
And then vice chair is also doing that. But they didn't say anything about late start or anything.
Uh, fully, I don't know, nobody said nothing to me.
I guess this way...
Yeah, right now we got twenty individuals online and you're the only member so far.
Okay, I'll just stay on.
We see, adieu.
There's more than 20 people. Yeah, but there's nothing... They might don't... They might be on hold.
And so...
Because they might not have a quorum yet.
(laugh) Okay. I'm freaking out.
So... You can just like... Well, hold on. (cough)
Good morning. Is the Health Education and Human Services Committee meeting agenda begun?
No, it has not. It's still standby.
All right.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Very, um...
(noise)
(noise)
Very, um...
(noise)
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 Hello, um, can one of the delegates text Chairman So that we're waiting online? Thank you. Good morning. Is call to the public, has call to the public already taken place? Or is this meeting over? Am I late? Am I late?
No, haven't started yet ma'am. We're still waiting on quorum.
Oh, thank you very much. And whom would I check in with, um, in reference to addressing, to, um, call to the public, sir?
The chair, who's not online yet.
Oh, okay.
This is Vice Chair Slater.
There's the Vice Chair.
Mr. Moes, who do we have on the line?
Ma'am, could you state your name, please?
Um, this is, um, Mrs. Joanne Gray. I am, um, the Navajo Nation, I am part of the board for the Navajo Nation Board of Education as a parent representative. But, um, yeah, I would like to address the committee, I guess, right there, if possible.
Regarding what matter more.
Um, I would like to, um, well, just some concern, well, a concern that has, um, bothered me being on the Navajo Nation Board of Education for a year now. And this is in reference to, um, school board members as well as Navajo Nation Board members sitting multiple seats. And that, that, I'll just leave it at that. And if, with permission, I would like to elaborate on it a little bit more. If I am out of line, just let me know. But, um, that's just basically my observation.
That's great. Um, thank you very much for your comments. Um, why don't we connect offline and then at a future Health Education Human Services Committee meeting, if it is deemed appropriate, we could have a report and maybe have you deliver that report to the committee. But since you are a member of an organization and entity within the Navajo Nation, and that is the Navajo Nation School Board, I, I'd appreciate if we kind of relate to each other on those terms. And so it'd be good for us to, if you're making a representation on behalf of the committee, that you, um, work through the committee to make that request. If you're making it more than an individual capacity, then, um, I'll, I'll message you. It looks like you are on Zoom right now, so I think I can, I can directly message you and I'll send you my contact information for us to discuss, discuss this further. At this time, Mr. Moes, how many members do we, of the committee do we have on the line?
Vice Chair, we have four, including yourself, Honorable Gay, Honorable Nalona, and Honorable Nika.
Okay, it's 10:06 AM. I'm going to call the committee to order. And Mr. Moes, can you please proceed with the roll call?
Yes, sir. Honorable Dan Aliso.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you, sir. Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Call up.
I'm present, I'm present.
Thank you, Honorable Nalona. Honorable Nalona. Okay, thank you. Honorable Shadi So. Honorable Shadi So. Honorable Dan Aliso. Honorable Dan Aliso.
He said he was there.
Honorable Mrs. Jweneika. Vice Chair, we have four members come to the quorum.
Delegate Paul Begay is here also.
Oh, sorry about that, sir.
Thank you, Lieutenant, I can reflect that Delegate Begay is on the line. Let's move forward with our agenda. And I'll ask for an invocation from Delegate Begay, Chanelle. Delegate Begay, are you able to provide the invocation or should we likely to ask someone else?
Chanelle, Vice Chair, I'd be glad to provide invocation. I don't know.
Valid and just as important. So, um, that, um, even more so when we talk about elderly home care, elderly, uh, care at the facilities, bor- border automation. Um, and of course, the water projects. That's just affect the health of our constituents. But A La Committee members, so we got, uh, the item number two taken on, uh, care of. And then now we go to item number three, review and adopt the agenda. So my Yazi, Ms., uh, Martinez, can you, uh, provide that?
Good morning, everyone. We stand up the Health Education Human Services Committee, twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council. Regular meeting, February seventeen, twenty twenty-one, nine AM. Presiding Honorable Daniel Esso, Chairperson Honorable Carl Russell Slater, Vice Chairperson. One call meeting to order, roll call invocation announcements. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, review and adopt the journals. Five, receiving report. A, update report on water mission from Navajo Area Indian Health Service. B, report on elderly home care from Navajo Department of Social Services. C, discussion regarding Hess meeting with U N M administration. Six, old business. Seven, new business. Eight, other. Eight, Koga meeting announcement. Chair members, the agenda has been ready to the record.
Motion.
Motion, Halona. Okay, Kusila, uh, we have a motion by Honorable Edison Winika and a second by Honorable Purnell Halona. Committee members, do we have any other items you wish to add to the agenda?
Chair, Halona?
Uh, oh, Honorable Purnell Halona, go ahead.
Uh, there was a, uh, individual that got on there earlier. She wanted to know if she could speak. Uh, I think she was a school board member, Mrs. Gray. Are, are they on the agenda?
Hmm. Is Ms. Joanne Gray a member of the Navajo Nation Board of Education?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Okay, um, possibly, but when it comes to our, our discussion and, and it's regarding, um, the, uh, the possible scheduling of, uh, meetings with the U N M administration.
Oh, Chair.
Oh, sit down.
Chair members of the committee, uh, I think, uh, Vice Chair responded to her. She wanted to address, uh, uh, the school boards. And I think we're addressing that already. And the Chair wanted to talk to her offline and, uh, put her on at another time because we're still addressing, uh, uh, the school board situation.
Oh, you mean, we, the part that we had, uh, there is no resolution with, uh, Travis versus Navajo Nation?
Yes, oh.
Okay. All righty, so we'll, we'll leave it as, as the way that Vice Chair responded.
Yes, oh.
Hon- Honorable Halona. That will be the call of the Chair also.
Honored Chair, thank you.
Oh, Kusila. All right, if there's no other discussion, then Mr. Moes, roll call vote, please.
Hi, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Junior.
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior goes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater goes green. Honorable Purnell Halona.
Purnell votes green.
Honorable Purnell Halona votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Winika, green. Honorable Edison J. Winika votes green. Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Moes. Left the record show, four in favor, zero opposed, uh, one committee member excused and the Chair not voting. Um, so with that, we'll go on to, um, item number four, review and adopt the journals, there being none. We'll bypass that and go to item number five, receiving report. A, update report on water mission from the Navajo Area Indian Health Services. Um, originally, we had, uh, um, Area Director Rosalyn So listed, but, uh, the Chair received a text that she's on a different call. So, uh, Mr. Marquis Yazi is delegated. And then also, um, there's a whole panel from, um, Indian Health Service, both from the national as well as from Navajo area. Mr. Marquis Yazi.
Uh, good morning, uh, this is, uh, Marquis Yazi. Before I begin, uh, are you guys able to view, uh, the PowerPoint presentation? If you can just get a confirmation.
Um, ha- uh, Mr. Yazi, had that PowerPoint been sent out? Because, um, I'm, most of the committee members are by telephone. I think Honorable Slater can, uh, view it. If you show it, if you share it, he's usually in the meeting by Zoom. And I don't know, uh, about Honorable Halona. You, are you, uh, in the call by Zoom or by telephone?
Yes, it is. I'm on by telephone.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Yazi, please share, uh, the, um, PowerPoint with Ms. Martinez and then she can forward it to the committee members. And after that, we can be actively viewing your PowerPoint presentation.
Aye, perfect. I, I just sent that over, thanks.
Okay. And, and there was an individual that was from the Self-Determination Office from Washington, DC? Is that the correct, uh, title that I heard? Mr. Hal- uh, Mr. Hardy, was it?
Mr. Harvey, David, David Harvey. No, I'm not from, I am from the, uh, Office of Environmental Health and Engineering, Division of Sanitation Facilities Construction in, in Rockville. Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Yazi, you still have the floor.
Perfect. Um, well, I guess I could get started. Um, again, good morning, uh, committee members and, um, those on the line. Um, Yat esh gado shidneh, um, shee markey yazi inisia. Um, hopsoi nishle, um, ado, uh, teyago nchi deet nasha. Uh, again, my name is Marquis Yazi, uh, with the Office of, uh, Indian Self-Determination, uh, for the Navajo Area I H S. I, I serve as the Director, um, and our office works with, um, the Navajo Area Director, um, on tribal-related matters and works, uh, in collaboration with our sister federal agencies, um, uh, as well as our tribal, uh, and external, uh, stakeholders. Um, but again, uh, on behalf of the Navajo Area I H S, uh, thank you for, uh, allowing us the opportunity to provide an overview of, uh, the Navajo Nation, uh, Water Access Coordination Group and trans- transitional water point projects, uh, currently going on. I also have on the line, uh, subject matter experts, um, uh, Captain David Harvey, uh, from I H S headquarters, as well as, um, uh, Captain Rachel Brown. Um, both, uh, work with the Division of Sanitation Facilities Construction, um, and are specifically, um, uh, work on this specific project. Uh, but before I get, begin, I, I just want to underscore, um, uh, the I H S recognizes, uh, the authority of, of tribal lea- leadership, um, especially at the Navajo Nation. Um, uh, the ones who make that judgment calls, um, and which is your right, um, in the exercise of your sovereignty. Um, and as, as we move forward collectively, um, the I H S, uh, want to be thoughtful, um, uh, attentive and supportive of your needs as, and, um, as well as your priorities as you make those, uh, uh, decisions. Um, but, but again, uh, my name is Marquis Yazi, uh, with the Office of Indian Self-Determination, Navajo Area, uh, I H S. Um, just to give you a general overview, before I turn it over to, uh, Captain Harvey, as well as, uh, uh, Captain Brown, uh, to provide, um, additional comments. Um, the Sanitation Facilities Construction Program is an integral, integral part, component, um, of the Indian Health Service, um, disease prevention activities. It was created in nineteen, uh, fifty-nine by Public Law eighty-six, one twenty-one. And through this specific law, uh, it provides technical assistance and, and financial assistance, uh, to Indian tribes, uh, and Alaska, uh, native communities, um, for their cooperative development and continuing operation of, of, uh, safe water, uh, wastewater, as well as, uh, uh, solid waste systems, uh, and related support, uh, facilities. Um, a- again, uh, since nineteen fifty, uh, nineteen fifty-nine, uh, the I H S has used, uh, sanitation facilities construction, um, as an integral, uh, component of I H S, uh, disease prevention activities, uh, which has decreased, uh, mortality rates, um, from environmentally related diseases by eighty percent since, uh, nineteen seventy-three. Um, the I H S Facilities Appropriation Report, which was published March seventh of two thousand nineteen, uh, was provided to, uh, the Tribal Facilities Appropriation Advisory Board. Um, and this identifies, um, that nationwide sanitation deficiency in two thousand nineteen, um, totaled approximately two point seven billion dollars and severely affects, um, the Alaska, uh, Navajo, Great Plains and California area offices or, or regions. Um, the sanitation project needed, uh, for existing American Indian Alaska Native homes and/or communities at the end of two thousand nineteen, uh, was estimated at two point six billion dollars nationally and specifically within the Navajo area, a hundred and thirty-two billion dollars, uh, of unmet need. Um, and, uh, nationally, a hundred and ten thousand, um, American Indian and Alaska natives, um, were affected of those seventeen thousand five hundred homes within the Navajo area, um, within the Navajo area at the end of twenty, uh, end of the year, two thousand nineteen, that needed some form of sanitation, uh, facility construction. That was compiled in our GIPRA report. Um, a, a recent cost benefit analysis indicated that, um, for every dollar I H S spends, um, on sanitation facilities to serve eligible existing homes, um, at least a twenty-fold return, uh, in health benefits is achieved. Um, and the I H S Sanitation Facilities Construction Program has been, uh, the primary provider of these services, um, since nineteen sixty. Um, and, uh, one of the initiatives that this, uh, department has been, uh, endeavoring on is the Water Access Coordination Group. Um, due largely to, uh, the lack of water to many family homes, um, presents significant public health deficiencies and, um, and we've, uh, um, the Navajo area is responsible for providing, uh, not only healthcare infrastructure, but, uh, water, uh, and sanitation infrastructure as well. Um, and, uh, the Water Access Coordination Group, um, is a coalition of Navajo Nation leaders, um, and water experts who have, uh, worked together with federal agencies, universities, um, re- researchers, nonprofits and, and funders, uh, to respond to the COVID-nineteen, uh, crisis and beyond. And the focus of the Water Access Coordination Group is, is on this significant clean water access and quality challenges faced by many, uh, families across the nation. Um, and the Water Access Coordination Group sought to respond not only to the current pandemic, but beyond, uh, because the clean water access, uh, issues of the Navajo Nation will endure even after, uh, the crisis, um, subsides. Um, uh, the WAGU also formed, uh, a sub-part group on water access, communication and research. Uh, the stated goals of which are as follows. Um, one, to promote, uh, safe water consumption by, uh, deny, uh, Navajo people who have no piped water by building trust and knowledge on how to access safe water. Um, and secondly, to develop a common understanding by universities about the drinking water research priorities of, of the Navajo Nation. Um, and, uh, a- as a result, um, of various transitional water points, uh, were created throughout the Navajo Nation. And the funding allocation that was provided, uh, for these transitional water points is that the I H S allocated, uh, ten million dollars of CARES Act funding, um, for these projects. Uh, and most of that has been allocated to the Navajo area. Um, and selected chapters were identified through an I H S-conducted survey to receive, um, a transitional water point based on the water access need. Um, uh, initially, the first distribution was four point eight million and that was provided to all of the twelve-area office. And the second distribution, um, was provided to the Navajo Area, uh, I H S and, and that totals, uh, five point thirty-six million dollars. And currently, throughout the Navajo Nation, there are a total of, uh, fifty-nine, uh, active transitional water point projects in, in fifty-nine chapters. Um, and these are just some of the, uh, images, um, of, of some of the transitional water point projects, um, that are, that have been developed throughout the Navajo Nation, um, as well as, uh, some people can use them for, uh, sanitation needs. Um, and, uh, in this particular, uh, status map provides, um, all the existing, uh, permanent water points in red, um, as well as the blue, um, dots, uh, of the transitional water points. Um, and then, uh, areas, um, identify free water access, uh, free water access and water storage containers, um, that the, um, Water Access Coordination Group are, um, providing to local community members, um, as well as, uh, free water access, storage containers, as well as, uh, disinfectant, um, tabs, um, and, and promoting, promoting those, um, avenues for them to use. Um, one of the things that we have, uh, the Water Access Coordination Group has been, um, um, getting out is, uh, what is known as a beneficial use agreement.
Oh, wonderful gift.
B U A, uh, identify roles and responsibilities, um, regarding the projects. Um, and I'll have, uh, Captain Harvey and, uh, with, uh, Captain Brown provide a little bit more information on those, uh, the BTUs. But some of the challenges that we are facing, um, w- with regard to the transitional water points are, are some of the ongoing maintenance or the upkeep for these infrastructures of how we can better coordinate those efforts, um, as well as the monitoring and operational times. Uh, some individuals have communicated that they have gone to these chapter houses, but, um, that the, unfortunately, these, uh, chapter houses have been closed, um, due to COVID. So, better coordinating those efforts, um, to see how we can continue to monitor those, um, ensure that those individuals receive the, uh, water access, uh, needs, as well as, uh, possible implementation of, uh, a card meter mechanism of some sort, very similar to what INTUA has used, uh, for, um, uh, for, for water wells at some of the, the chapter houses. Um, but also, uh, we are have, we have been experiencing a low usage, um, with regards to these, uh, water access. I mean, perhaps it could be communication issues, um, but we, we really need to get the, the public, um, involved in, of how these resources are available to them. Uh, the, uh, Water Access Coordination Group have also, um, established a, a website, the www.navajoseafewater.org, um, and that kind of identifies, uh, some of the ongoing projects. Uh, there are messages from President Nez, uh, within that particular site. Um, but, uh, and, uh, Mr. James Adichai, Department Three Manager, has identified and cited that the Water Access Coordination Group, uh, Work Group is a major undertaking to assess water wells and water sanitation at each Navajo chapter community. Uh, this effort will be better serve Navajo families with water needs, uh, for washing and quality drinking water. Uh, through this partnership, we hope to help alleviate or reduce the community spread of, uh, COVID-nineteen. Um, and those are just some of the, uh, uh, comments, um, that, that, uh, people have made with regard to this specific, uh, with this specific project. Um, but at this time, I'll, I'll turn it over to, uh, uh, Captain Rachel Brown, uh, to provide additional context, um, with regard to these, as well as, uh, Captain, um, David Harvey, um, who both have been the leads on this pro- project. And I, I thank him for, for leading this effort, um, and, and guiding us through this. Um, Captain Brown?
Hello, um, good morning. Thank you, Marquis, for providing the update. Um, my name is Rachel Brown and I have, uh, Captain Harvey on the, on the call. Um, so, the Navajo area will provide support for the continuation of this water pro- water project. And for more of the context, I'll, um, I'll, since we have Captain Harvey on the call, I'll go ahead and, um, defer to, to Captain Harvey to provide some additional information. I think Marquis covered the most of the objectives for this water project. So, go ahead, Captain Harvey.
Uh, thanks, Captain Brown. Uh, thanks, Committee Chair. Thanks, members. Yes, uh, and thanks, Marcus, for, um, providing that overview. I'll just, I want to first say, it's, it's been an honor to, to assist the Navajo Nation during this time of crisis. And, uh, it's, we've, uh, hopefully, uh, built some really strong partnerships, um, strengthened, strengthened partnerships among the Navajo Nation federal entities, as well as, um, um, federal agencies and, and universities through the Water Access Coordination Group. So, uh, as, as Marcus said, this is a, uh, a, a nationwide, uh, project that is, uh, that has been going on, uh, the fifty-nine transitional water points that have been installed, uh, in, in addition to services at, uh, permanent existing water points in, in other chapters are, are available to provide free water access. Is there a question? Okay. So, it's available to provide, uh, to provide free water access. Additionally, there are, um, thirty-seven thousand five-gallon, uh, storage containers that are, have been provided to chapters, uh, for the distribution to, uh, each person living in homes without piped water, um, as well as chlorine disinfection tablets where needed to increase chlorine levels to ensure that there, the water, uh, that is hauled for use for drinking and cooking in the home in these containers is safe for use. Uh, we've done considerable training of the chapter officials, uh, on the, the responsibilities that, uh, that they've agreed to, uh, and provided numerous resources on the navajoseafewater.org website about these responsibilities, including videos and fact sheets. Um, and so, as, as Marquis alluded to, you know, we are seeing some underutilization of the, of the water points. And, uh, the coordinate, the communication subgroup is, is working to kind of figure out new messages that may be able to be provided, uh, to engage, uh, both the chapters and the public on the, uh, the importance of, of access to these points. I think key to that is that the points are open and accessible during, uh, normal hours of chapter operations. And we understand during COVID-nineteen, that's been a challenge. Uh, the chapters have been, have been, um, you know, under pressures to, to, to limit, uh, distance, to, to have distancing and, and not been fully open. But, uh, as we move forward, uh, in the, in recovery and gain access to the, the vaccine, I, I think, uh, having these chapter point, these water points open at the chapters is, is critical. Additionally, uh, the chapters should be providing reports, uh, that they've agreed to in, in the, in their beneficial use agreements as well, uh, to, uh, the Indian Health Service regarding the, the number of water containers and water disinfection tablets, um, distributed. Uh, this will provide feedback both to, uh, the Indian Health Service and the Navajo Nation about the, the impacts of the, of the project and, and provide an indication on perhaps where more messaging and public outreach is needed. Uh, so, uh, I, I look forward to continuing my work with the Navajo Area I H S, as well as other, uh, Navajo Nation government entities, including the Division of, including Mr. James Adichai at the Division of, uh, Community Development on this project, um, for the, for the, for the foreseeable future. And, uh, with that, I'll conclude my brief and, and be available for any questions. Thank you.
Committee members, do you have any questions? Uh, Mr. Marquis Yazi, did you want to address the committee again?
Oh, uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, again, this is Marquis. I, I just want to acknowledge, um, all of our, uh, external stakeholders here listed. Some of them are not listed, but I, from my understanding, there were a total of twenty-one, um, uh, stakeholders who participated in this project ongoing, um, some of them NGOs, non-governmental organizations, as well as universities, um, uh, offices of the President and Vice President, uh, NECA, uh, Navajo Engineering Construction Authority. So, I just want to, uh, acknowledge them, um, um, in these efforts, um, moving forward, um, and, and really working at, at the chapter levels, uh, providing all of the information materials such as signage, um, and, uh, so at, at every level, um, I, I just want to express my communication, uh, appreciation, um, to these, uh, uh, entities. Thanks.
Thank you, Marquis Yazi. And then, for the record, Honorable, uh, Charlene So is on the call now. So, we have the full membership of the Hess Committee on the call. Um, committee members, any questions? For myself.
Chair? Oh.
Go ahead, uh, Honorable Slater, go ahead. You have priority. Committee has priority before the Chair can jump in.
Jumping all over the place. Uh, thank you, Chair, and thank you very much to the presenters. Um, my name is Carl Slater. I'm the Vice Chair of the Committee, if you don't know who I am. And for those listening on the line, adana nishnegi, eh, kiaani, chee sonteneh, bashashchien, sentajini dasha chee, uh, sonteneh, dashanela, chee Carl Russell Slater, dasha jineh, sanikana, dan nasha. My name is Carl Russell Slater. Like I said, um, I represent five chapters in Northern Central Agency. And they include Rough Rock, Sancheja, as well as Rock Point, Round Rock, Luka Chukai and Sealy, Wheatfields. So, thank you very much for the presentation. The first question that I have is, what has I H S learned about these watering points? I think that it's not necessarily a communication issue. It's about the type of water access point that was installed at these facilities and what is meaningful and useful for our people. Um, I, I think about what was installed over here at Round Rock, what was installed over in Sealy, as well as in Luka Chukai. You know, you, you see these points and they're very small distribution points. They're not the big overhead water access points that people need in order to fill the water requirements that they have if they don't have running water. And so, I, I think in, in general, while the right idea was out there in terms of providing more access to our people, the type of access points that were developed and, and, and sorry, that, that were constructed, really didn't address how people fill up their water containers. And that is something I know that was raised, um, in the process. And I think that creating a different sort of water access point would probably be more cumbersome. a different sort of water access point would probably be more cumbersome, and the idea was to get as much as we could out there in a short period of time. But if you survey our citizens and the ones who haul water on a consistent basis, those smaller water access points where, you know, something where you can wash your hands or fill a small container, aren't helpful for, you know, filling up a big, I mean, whether it's a 300-gallon, you know, cube, or whether you're filling up something that's larger into the thousands of gallons and hauling it in your truck. That, that's just not the flow and the sort of capacity that's appropriate for them. So, I think those are my thoughts right now, but I want to hear from IHS on what they believe are some of the lessons they've learned, because people know about these spaces, but it's not just a matter of communication. I think it's the actual infrastructure itself. Thank you.
I can respond to this. This is Captain David Harvey, and thank you, thank you for that, Chris, question.
Go ahead, Mr. Harv.
Vice Chair Slater. Yeah, you're correct. The, in that, it was, a preferred option would have been the typical overhead water points that people are used to, used to see.
You'd have to see.
The, the challenge there was the quickness with which we could deploy that and the availability of funding. Many of those would have required power sources, which was, have taken an extremely long length of time to get in, to get in place. The, the idea is that, you know, that, that this is a transition, and that's why it's called transitional. And so, we have already received feedback about chapters desiring larger water points in their community, and we're taking that information, and I believe Rachel Brown can, Captain Brown can speak a little bit about this, going to be incorporating those, those projects into the IHS Sanitation Deficiency System for prioritization and funding. So, but in the interim, you know, this is, this is what, the resources that were allocated, and we were able to provide in a relatively short timeframe, less than 10 months, when typically, I think, you know, projects on average, sanitation facilities, construction project on average are taking about three and a half years to build. So, the speed at which we were able to do this is, was important, I think, given the pandemic and where we were. Again, yes, I would concur that the volumes of water are probably less, but, you know, they are, they're there and available, and people, you know, should take advantage of them, you know, since, you know, this is a kind of a prepaid resource that's available, and, and begin to use them as such, and then request for additional, additional water, water points or more, or more standard water point approach, I think, will be entertained and by the, by the IHS moving forward. I don't know. Captain Brown, do you have anything you'd like to mention on that?
Hello, yes, um, so, Honorable Slater, yes, thank you for the question. So, one thing I know that I heard was also that a lot of people wanted to have like a greater volume of water for their livestock. So, just knowing that this was provided for drinking water purposes only, that provided, that was a challenge at the beginning. And as Captain Harvey said, that providing, you know, what the, what the community wishes for the transitional watering points or for the permanent watering points, that's been helpful. That's been something we've learned and are learning through this process. So, when, any information that the chapters, what they're experiencing now in the communities, if they can submit those questions through the Navajo Water, navajosafewater.org website, then we'll, we'll capture those comments, and then we'll definitely put those in the SDS priority listing for prioritization and funding. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, one key point, if I may, also, Chair, Captain Harvey?
Yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, Captain Brown makes a, an important point, is that the resources from the Indian Health Service, for the purposes of water and wastewater, are, are solely directed towards water use in, in homes, for, for residents of homes. And, and so, there's kind of a, there's kind of a disconnect, you know, between that and kind of what people would like to use in their home to support the full range of, of needs of, of water use. And so, that's where I think there should, could be, you know, a little bit more coordination on that issue to ensure that funding sources and ways in which to address, you know, issues like agriculture and ag water, you know, going forward on water projects. You know, it doesn't seem like the, the Indian Health Service is ignoring that issue. We know that that's, that's an issue, but we're kind of a little bit limited by their, the ability to use resources for those purposes because of the way our authorizing legislation is and budget appropriations are from Congress.
Thank you, Captain Harvey, Captain Brown. Committee members, anybody else? Any other follow-up questions? Okay. That opens the door for the Chair to ask a question or to make a statement. Basically, um, the classification sanitation facilities. Does the sanitation facilities go toward sewer lagoons? And I know they do the septic tanks. So, in that aspect, the sewer lagoons are aerobic, and the septic tanks are anaerobic systems. And right now, we have chapters that are wanting to contract with the companies that would basically pump the anaerobic systems, the septic tanks. And there is really no place for them to take the liquid waste. And I hear there's a system that can be anaerobic sewer lagoon. Has the Indian Health Service looked at the possibility of building more of those sanitation facilities that can accept anaerobic solid wa, or liquid waste? That would be my question.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair, for that question. This is Captain David Harvey. I, I won't speak specifically on the Navajo Nation, if there's been some, but I'll say in general, yes, the Indian Health Service has provided, provided, and projects for support of septic tank wastes. And so, I guess my suggestion would be that if, that those haven't been made on the list, and then maybe Captain Brown can get in touch with where those are needed and begin to think, think about how to include those.
Hello, this is Captain Brown. Yes, thank you for the question. We have, have in the past designed and constructed some sewer lagoon systems. I believe, I, David Harv, David McDonald is on the call right now, so currently looking down the listing of our SDS system. I don't, I don't know if there's any that come up that are high, scoring high on the list. David McDonald, can, can you elaborate?
Mr. McDonald. Rachel, Captain Brown, and Committee members, my name is David McDonald. I'm with the Navajo Area Indian Health Service Sanitation Facilities Construction. Yes, we have constructed a number of those septic cells. They call them septic cells. I can think of several at some of the major communities that NTU operates, these large sewer lagoons, for example, at Dilcon, there's a septic cell there that a septic tank pumper truck can empty those, the waste from those, from those septic tanks. There are a number of improvements being requested by NTU on, on some of the large wastewater treatment plants, and, and there are some modernization of those septic cells that are being requested in our SDS system. And we are, we are working with, they, they, I can get into a lot of detail, but I don't think you, you want to hear all the, all the detail of the equipment that's necessary to, to, that they're requesting for removing grit and a lot of other things that, that come with that. So, but they, they are on our list. They are, there is a plan for implementing that over time. The wastewater treatment plants at Tubusiti, Kienta, and a lot of these, Shiprock, for example, being improved, and those improvements need to happen first before the, the septic cells are improved. But there, there is a plan for that, and we do have, we are working with NTU on implementing that. So, I hope that answers that question.
Yes, somewhat. And I guess the process then is, how do communities that basically have the, how do they proceed to get funding for the septic cells? The other is, I guess, one of the public education aspects. The map, the color-coded map and the color-coded pens, I guess, doesn't really do justice. And so, I was wondering if you could put the chapters and then the type of watering points that they have on an Excel spreadsheet? So that when the public education component comes in, then each of the chapters know exactly what, what they have in their chapter area. Right now, it's just something that, you know, they can't really work out. And the other is, could you furnish a committee? The part on, what was it you called it? Oh, I'm sorry. The Beneficial Use Agreement. And, and the other is, just realize that we do have a new set of chapter officials. Some brand new and some that have been renewed but are in different capacities. Just this week, the new chapter officers are holding their first chapter meetings. So, that particular education has to come keep going. And then, the other part is, the folks that do have a water system in their home, they still are able to use and fill up water tanks, take to their livestock. Or where, let's say, at a homesite lease, they have portable pins, and they have sheep or cattle or horses, they, they run the hose to that. So, that aspect, there has to be, you know, I know from the HHS side, you know, there's a kind of refrain or not make it public knowledge that the folks that do have running water in their homes use it for livestock. The other is, um, the Cutter Lateral, the one that's built as a partial settlement of the Navajo Nation, the State of New Mexico, and the federal government's water settlement agreement. It does, that particular system, the installation that goes all the way from sixhinoht, fifty down to counselor, down toward Oho and Seano and Torion, and Pueblo, Batado, and Huayor State, it does allow for agricultural use. And there, along the way, there are some livestock watering points. So, I think that that's one of the items that the Indian Health Service has to be cognizant about, and the other part is, again, I guess, the public education. So, that would be the extent of my thoughts, and, um, oh, specific, specific to the construction of the hospital at Dilcon. The original plan was to have the water pipe from Loop, and the, and so, the last word we received was, that wasn't going to happen because of the quality of the water. So, where is that alternative water source going to come from as a result of that? That, that hasn't been really publicly announced. That would be the extent of my statements and questions. Thank you.
Yes, hi, Chair. This is Captain David Harvey. I can respond to a few of your questions there, and I think maybe have to rely on maybe the Navajo Area to respond on a couple, and then maybe we will need to follow up with you on a few. With regard to your, your question about another map, you're right, the map that was displayed during the power, during the PowerPoint presentation was just a one type, type of map that we've been using to communicate information. On the, the website, navajosafewater.org, you can actually zoom in to the water point there and click on the dot that's represented there and get information, operating hour information, the chapter website, emailing the chapter, and the Division of Community Development, as well as an indication of whether or not the water allocation that's been made there has been, is still in place, or if they, it's ended, or if the containers are there. So, a lot of information. And yes, we are going to be providing to the Navajo Area a complete report that describes not only the type of water point that has been, that's, that's been, that's part of the project at each chapter, but the number of resources that have been provided there as well, and that will be in tabular format in, in the report. And if, if it's needed, those, those tables could be extracted and provided in an Excel format as well for easier manipulation. The, the beneficial use agreements that you requested, yes, I think Marquis Yazzy has those. I forwarded those to him, so there, there are two examples. If, if Marquis would, he can, he can provide you, provide you with those by email after the meeting. And so... And so, yeah, and there's regard to livestock, the question at, at water points that are kind of termed in this Water Access Project as existing permanent watering points, you know, there's, those presumably were, water was being hauled from them previously for the purposes of livestock and, and that probably, well, you know, that is, that is not impacted by that project that that will continue, by this project that will continue, just that the, the allocation of the water resources probably won't cover that portion of the, of the, wasn't estimated to cover that portion of the volume. So, so yeah, no, no change there. So those are, those are the questions that I can, I can respond to. The question about the cutter lateral in the Dilcon Hospital, I guess I'll have to defer those to the area and, or maybe for the, to his front.
Hi, Delegate, so this is Marquis Yazi. Just to provide some updates with regard to the Dilcon Health Center, it is currently being construction, constructed under a Title V construction project agreement with the Winslow Indian Healthcare Center. The facility construction site was shut down in the month of December, but it, but is now open and, and construction is continuing on that project. It was conveyed to me the other day that substantial completion for this project is scheduled for December of 2021. And we, we should see a full completion scheduled in summer of 2022. But with regard to the specific water question that you had raised on the issue or the concern, I'll, I'm going to turn that over to Captain Brown or Mr. McDonald on that particular issue. Thanks.
Captain Brown and Mr. McDonald.
Hi, this is Captain Brown. In regards to the Dilcon water, water system, we still plan to use the, the water currently. And there hasn't been any, any issues with that, as I understand. We do have weekly meetings about the, the progress for the water system. We currently have a water, investigating some water, water wells out there that was put on, on hold just due to community outreach and more information out there. We were investigating pump testing one, one well out there, well to be. There's also planned well currently ongoing in the Loop area. David McDonald, correct me if I'm wrong, or feel free to jump in. But currently we are planning to use the, the water sources out in the Loop region for the Dilcon Health Facility. And to answer the question about the, how, how do communities proceed to get funding for septic cells? For our IHS, so water, water facilities and sewer facilities, it starts with the homeowner application. So we're, we're currently reviewing and planning to update our, our homes in our SDS system. And then from there, the, the planning and the design starts for feasible water and sewer facilities for those communities. So that would be the first start is to get the homeowners, the applications submitted to the, the respective district offices. We have four located in, to the city district, Shiprock District, Gallup District and before Defiance District.
Rachel, I can, I can add a few comments about the Loop to Dilcon project. Chairman, so it's, it's a little startling that the information is not correct that you said about the, the project being, the water quality being bad and that we're not proceeding with that Loop to Dilcon project. Large project, it's, it's estimated to be about $35 million project to bring water from Loop to Dilcon. But there, there's a two-pronged approach being taken on, on the, the clinic or the health center and, and water. And we're working with NTUA on that. We're working to, to bolster or improve the water supply coming from Lower Greasewood, which is where the water comes from now. We're adding a booster and we're, we're doing improvements on that side of the water system so that the water, there's, so there, there will be plenty of water and sufficient amount of water when, when the health center opens. The, the $35 million project to bring water from Loop to Dilcon is, is the long range, the long-term water solution for, for Dilcon and, and the District Seven Water System. And the well that we drilled in Loop is a very good producing well. The water quality has been talked about because it has high TDS, which is total dissolved solids. And that is, is not a, it's not a, a drinking water primary standard. It's, it's really an aesthetic issue that we're, we're doing some, we're, we're going to be test pumping that well for a third time here in the next month to, to mitigate the, the issues with that TDS, the, the dissolved salts basically in the water supply. The, the water quality is not that much different than the, the existing wells that are in Loop now being used by the community. So it's really, it, it, there's nothing wrong with the water. It's, it's higher in TDS than we would like, but we're going to try and bring that down by putting in what we call a packer in the well to seal off some of the formations that we think that, that salt is coming from. So we're proceeding with that with NTUA, our partners, because they're eventually going to operate that well, you know, once the project's completed. So that project is going to begin this summer. The water lines are going to start going in, the tanks, there's boosters, five boosters, I believe, and, and water tanks that have to lift all that water all the way to Dilcon. So it's a big project, will take at least a year to construct. So just, we are, we are proceeding with, with that project. If there's any questions, we, we can probably answer those offline. So thank you.
What do you want? Going twice?
Chair, Delegate Slater.
Honorable Vice Chair Slater, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'd like to raise an issue, or two issues, and I'll start off with the smaller one. That is, if the relevant individuals on the line could note that we have a watering point across from the NHA housing in Round Rock, that the community is very interested in restoring to operational status. And if we could set up a follow-up meeting to discuss that. And then also at that follow-up meeting, I would like to discuss families and individuals who have been removed from water projects in the Rock Point community. And we had raised this issue with Director Seau at the onset of COVID and, and kind of right before then about who has ultimate decision-making authority on the, I don't know if you'd say residency requirements or other requirements for receiving service off of our waterline projects. We have a lot of citizens who have to seek work, you know, off the reservation and sometimes for several days during the week or for a week at a time may not be at their homesteads. But that is their home and under every definition of residency, they would fulfill that. They have every intention of returning there. They might have to stay in a motel for a few nights or for a week while they're working off the reservation, but they always come home. And those folks, I think we had about over 30 different homes that had been taken off of one of our projects up there. I just asked that IHS research and if they can provide that answer now, is this an exemption that the area director can offer? Is it something that needs to be elevated specifically within the sanitation chain of command? Is it something where we need to go to the IHS director to rectify? Because I think it's really wrong to deny people access to running water for their homes at a time like this. We're not going to end up improving the health outcomes of our communities if we have feasible projects to help people out and then we don't follow through on them. So thank you.
Honorable Slater, this is Captain Brown. We'll go ahead and schedule a meeting with, with you. And we'll, we'll address your comments and your questions in, in the meeting. We'll do, do our research. And it looks like it, we'll have to look at the homes on a case-by-case situation and then review what's been, what's been happening out there in the community. So we're happy to meet with you. We'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and schedule with you.
Delegate Slater, this is Marquis. I'll reach out to you and, and schedule a time and coordinate some dates to, to hold this meeting. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Committee members, chair is open to, for motion to accept the report.
Motion, Juanita.
Sila, Kehat, Patilla. Then, it's not, honorable Halona seconds the motion. Any other discuss?
Chair Seau, are you still on the call?
Oh, I was on mute. Thank you. Committee members, thank you for the motion and the second. And thank you to the folks from the Indian Area Health System as well as the National Office. Thank you. And presentation helped to basically clarify some of the items that may come up from the new chapter leadership. And we have a, a way to help them get their answers. Thank you. Any other questions, committee members? If not, then to Mr. Leonard Moes, roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Yeah, we get Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Paul Russell Slater.
Paul Slater green.
Honorable Paul Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Fernando Halona.
Halona votes green.
Honorable Fernando Halona votes green. Honorable Charlie So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlie So votes green. Honorable S. J. Juanita, green. Honorable S. J. Juanita votes green. Chair, a vote of five in favor, zero vote.
Thank you, committee members. So now we go to item 5B, report on the elderly care home, home care from Navajo Division of Social Services. Ms. Deanna Neswet Gishy and also from Gulfex, Ms. Valerie Jones, Dr. Jill Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Health Education Human Services Committee, this is Deanna Neswet Gishy. We will be providing information. A written report was submitted to Beverly to distribute to the honorable committee members. And I'd like to turn the time over to Ms. Regina Yazi, Department Manager III for Department of Family Services. And then she also has her colleague on the line, Marie Keone, who if questions are raised regarding the individuals with the Altex program, she can provide those responses. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. This is Regina Yazi. The report, I will just highlight some areas, I will not read it through completely. But just to, just to provide the report is that Division of Social Service, Department of Family Service is in its third year of its subcontracts with six nursing homes. And these contracts started January 1st, 2019, to, which will end this year, December 31st, 2021. On a yearly basis, the division also amends its memorandum of agreements with these subcontractors. And we have, we receive on a yearly basis, fund, funding, 638 BIA funding to, to implement the subcontracts with the facilities. And these are provided, our department, Department of Family Service provides case management services to elderly clients who request to be placed in these nursing homes. These nursing homes are located on and off the reservation. Through the MOAs, we are able to assist in making partial monthly residential care payments to these facilities at a negotiated daily rate with the facilities. And the contract analyst that we have here on board with the department receives and reviews monthly invoices, reviews monthly or quarterly narrative reports, reviews annual contracts with the vendors, conducts onsite monitoring reviews when the facility is, allows for those visits. At this time, of course, with the pandemic, we've not been able to do any monitoring visits all of 2020 and now we're going into 2021 that we're hopeful that the monitoring visits will, will be planned. So we have a chart there on page one with the six facilities as I outlined. Annie Juanica, Bonnie Home, Holbrook Extended Care, Little Sisters of the Poor, Navajo Land Nursing Home and Toye Industries. And in the second column lists the number of slots in accordance to the subcontracts that we have. And then with the type of service that they provide, such as Level One or Level Two Non-Skill Care, and it goes down from there, except for Toye Industries, which is a room and board for habilitation and daycare services only. And also at the bottom of page one explains what Level One, Level Two is in accordance to the type of service and what habilitation services refers to. On the next page, page two. On the next page, page two, for twenty nineteen, just for comparison purposes here, for twenty nineteen, Department of Family Service placed approximately one thousand three hundred and fifty-one elderly clients in these subcontracted facilities, which totaled to an expenditure of two million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-nine cents for that contract year, twenty nineteen. For twenty twenty contract year, there were seven hundred and eighty-four elderly clients placed in these facilities with a expenditure report of two million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, ninety-two cents. The reason there was an increase in the expenditure from the prior year and a decrease in the number of elderly clients in the facility is because there was an increase in the rate, in the daily rate for these facilities and which decreased the number of contracted slots for the facilities. The increase in the daily rate was negotiated back in twenty nineteen for the increased rate for twenty, for contract year, twenty twenty. For contract year, twenty twenty-one, which we're in currently, the MOAs were modified and they are currently at the Office of the Controller for review and assignment of contract numbers. Once the contract numbers are assigned, the Department of Family Service will be able to submit invoices for payments, which is beginning January, twenty twenty-one. And the last, we are in the last year, as I mentioned earlier, the last year of a three-year contract, which, so this current modification to the MOAs, which were certification regarding department and suspension, which were updated, the updated W-9 form, and then updated certificate of insurance were all done. And in accordance to, for the next chart there, the twenty twenty-one allocation amounts are listed as well for each of the six nursing homes for twenty twenty-one year. And on to Department of Family Service, Arizona Long-Term Care System, which is Altex. That is a different program under the department. And there are, that department is through, operates through intergovernmental agreements with the Arizona Healthcare Cost Containment System or Services, which is ACCESS, which provides case management services to approximately one thousand four hundred and eighty-two members. These members, elders, are different than the, than the Department of Family Service elderly services that we, that I went over in terms of those numbers for the contracts and MOAs. The IGA also serve approximately seven children. And this is as of January, twenty twenty-one, statistics for Altex. Seven children, one hundred and forty-seven adults, one thousand three hundred and twenty-eight elderly's were served so far. Of the elderly numbers, fifteen percent of them were placed in nursing homes, which are access-registered facilities. Eighty-two percent are provided services in their own homes and three percent are in assisted living homes. Majority of the Altex placements are in nursing home facilities located off of Navajo Nation. Due to only one nursing home facility on Navajo Nation that is, that is ACCESS certified. Below is a table for the twenty nineteen number of Ac-, Altex Access Clients in twenty nineteen. As of December, twenty nineteen, there were two hundred and ninety-four clients that were provided service in these types of certified access nursing homes. In twenty twenty-one, as of January, twenty twenty-one, on the third page, fourth page, rather, there were two hundred and forty elderly's placed in these facilities. Regarding COVID-19 mitigation protocol for these nursing homes, early on in the pandemic in March, twenty twenty, the Department of Family Service requested these nursing homes that are six thirty-eight subcontracted, they provide, the department, their COVID-19 mitigation protocols, which included having them commit to facility, having their facilities cleaned throughout the day, sanitized, wearing face masks, washing hands frequently throughout the day while at the facilities. And that all facilities had no visitors in their facilities throughout, throughout the day while, while clients were in the facilities. Visits were conducted either by phone calls or video chats. Nursing homes have been submitting their quarterly narrative reports to the department and have been complying with all safety guidelines in accordance to the CDC guidelines and in accordance to their own protocols that they had set in place. However, some residents have have reported on their quarterly reports, some decedents were due to COVID-19 infections since March of twenty twenty. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, that is our update report for the Department of Family Service. Thank you.
Committee members, do you have any questions on this particular aspect?
Chair, Wanika.
Honorable Edison Wanika, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, members of the committee. There was a legislation that went through the process for the home lenders, home in Chinley. And the funding was taken out of the UUFP. And last Wednesday, it was either Tuesday or Wednesday that the Navajo Nation President, President Nance signed it. So, but Director from Navajo Lenders, you know, has been trying to locate the documents. And are you aware, Ms. Yasi, about that allocation? Because it needs, he's going through the process and it's really slow. He's been trying to get ahold of OMB. Can you help us get that process as soon as possible? Would appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, the Department of Family Service is not involved with the legislation. That is something that the nursing home arranged on their own with the legislation and the president's office. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, may I have a response? This is Deanna Neswudgishy.
You may go ahead, Ms. Neswudgishy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Thank you, Honorable Wanika, for that question. I will do follow-up with Office of the President or Vice President to see how we can get those funding specifically to assist the facility in Chinley. So, I will do follow-up. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Ms. Yasi.
Committee members, any other questions?
This is Doggett Slater.
Honorable Vice Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you. I guess my first question is, is the program aware of the report in the Navajo Times a couple of weeks ago regarding the Winslow Campus of Care?
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, I personally am not aware of the, of the article in the Navajo Times.
Mr. Chair, this is Deanna Neswudgishy. May I do a response?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Thank you, Honorable Slater, for that question. Yes, I am aware of the article that was in the Navajo Times last Thursday. We were part of that discussion. We did receive an email from the Navajo Times reporter, which was sent to the Office of the President or Vice President, and so I did receive the information. They had just very specific questions regarding if, if we have oversight of Winslow Campus of Care. So, we did, we were able to provide a response to that specific question. So, yes, we were informed and we were involved in that response. I believe most of the questions were geared towards Department of Health. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Committee members?
Chair, can I ask a follow-up?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So, back to the program or the division. What is the division or program's position on oversight responsibilities or responsibilities related to individuals that are referred to places such as Winslow Campus of Care?
Ms. Neswudgishy or Ms. Regina Yasi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Honorable Slater, for the follow-up question. Regarding Winslow Campus of Care, we do not have that, a contract with Winslow Campus of Care. But as, as in the report that you see that Ms. Yasi had reported today, there are some individuals from Altex that were placed there. So, that's where we have the case management services that we provide. And Ms. Marie Keone, who is on this call as well, she is the program manager overseeing Altex. And so, we would be having to do follow-up with the case management visits as well. We don't quite have oversight, but we do have to follow-up with case management services, which we will follow-up as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Look, go ahead, Honorable Slater, to follow-up.
Thank you. So, in reviewing the report, I'm trying to understand exactly what's going on here. It says that DSS, the Department of Family Services, is in the third year of an MOA with six nursing home facilities. And of course, that does not include Campus of Care. And so, I think those are the ones where you provide case management for your elderly clients. And then at the, I think it was a third page, or at the bottom of the second page, it says that DFS Altex Program through an IGA with ACCESS provides case management for one thousand four hundred and eighty-two members. So, which, is that Department of, Navajo Nation Department of Family Services, your program has the IGA? Or are you saying that the Department of Health has the IGA? Can you help clarify that?
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, yes, Honorable Slater, I can clarify. The six subcontracts listed on page one are subcontracts through the Bureau of Indian Affairs six thirty-eight funding, which allows for the department to enter into such subcontracts to provide services to these nursing homes in terms of the number of slots that they're allotted and the types of services that they provide in terms of elderly's that are requesting to be placed in a nursing home in any of these six subcontracts that is under the Department of Family Service. And the other component, yes, is the Arizona Long-Term Care Systems, Altex. That is a different component under Department of Family Services, which is through the intergovernmental agreement. So, it's my understanding in the early nineties to mid-nineties when Navajo Nation approached the state of Arizona to enter into an IGA to have the nation oversee its own placements, case management of such services to its own Navajo members. Through the IGA, which has been in existence since mid nineteen nineties to present, these, the IGA is renewed every three years. And, and the Navajo Nation is reimbursed through these IGAs by the state of Arizona to do the case management services of these members, they're called members, that are approved on access, the state of Arizona health system. They are then placed in either, in any of the facilities that is ACCESS certified, the facilities listed. And that's how the Altex workers provide the case management service for these members. Marie Keone is the department manager for Altex. And Marie, if you have anything to add to that for further clarification, I'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Chair, and a question from Honorable Slater. This is Marie Keone. The Altex program is one of the programs that is under Department of Family Services. It kind of overlaps the services that DFS also provides. There are, what, what happens with Department of Family Services is they try to, when an individual needs placement in a nursing facility, they try to get them become eligible with, if they live within Arizona. They try to get them eligible for Altex through ACCESS. And if for some reason or another they don't qualify, maybe because of high income or then the next resort would be the facilities that's under DFS, which is the six nursing home facilities that are listed for- that are listed for, that are paid by BIA. So, they're like last resort. With the Altechs, the state determines eligibility. We don't determine, make that determination. All we do is provide case management services once the state informs us that this Navajo individual, or it could be another Native American that lives on Navajo. If they become eligible and they want Navajo to be the case managers, then the individual comes on our rolls and then we provide case management services. All the facilities that, as members of Altechs, they have access to various amount of services and these services are provided by providers that are registered with access. Access is the one that registers these providers and they have them available. So, when a member wants to be placed in a facility, a nursing home, we can only go with access-registered providers if they're not an access-registered provider. Access cannot pay the claims that they would be submitting. So, access is the one that administers all that as far as registering, certifying the providers. So, they're just out there, they're available. And so, when one of our members wants to be placed in a nursing home, we let them know which, you know, nursing homes are available and that's their option, which one they want to go with. Or either it's, they may end up in Phoenix and in a hospital, need to be placed in a nursing home and usually it's maybe the hospital that would place them in a nursing home. And then, maybe they will apply for Altechs and then they'll come on our rolls. So, they'll be already placed in a facility. So, that's, I hope I clarified that. Thank you.
Chair, I have a follow-up.
Go ahead, Honorable Slater.
Thank you. Director Neswogish, can you restate what you stated prior about the responsibilities of DSS and its role?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Thank you, Honorable Slater. Can you restate the question? I didn't quite understand.
I think the second question that I asked was what does the program view as its responsibilities with respect to these nursing homes? And why, I mean, what its oversight responsibilities are? And I think, you know, the response that I heard was that there is not a contract with Campus of Care and therefore, well, I don't know what and therefore, but I'm asking you to elaborate on the oversight responsibilities.
Thank you, Honorable Slater, for that clarification. So, under the Department of Family Services, the Altechs program would have oversight as far as continuing to provide the case management services. As Ms. Keoni had presented a few minutes ago, the state conducts eligibility and they have the full oversight, but we provide the case management services. And this is where we've had discussion last week as far as how we can continue to improve doing the monitoring oversights with the state. One example is the Developmental Disability Program. They have updated the Arizona DDAD criteria that the oversight, meaning the case management duties, can be done remotely. Normally, it's a person-to-person. So, with Altechs, which is also under access, the state access, they have their own written procedures as far as contact being able to be done remotely. So, that is an area that we would be looking forward of how we're going to do the monitoring of case management services. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Slater.
Chair, I have a follow-up.
Go ahead, Honorable Slater. You have the floor.
Thank you. So, in the course of case management services, does the program track the deaths of its clients at these facilities? Or whether they have contracted COVID-19? Or any other medical conditions for their treatment and stays at these facilities?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee and Honorable Slater. With the 638 contract facilities in March of 2020, we did send a memo to the six nursing home facilities to provide a report or, yeah, I guess a report on how they're going to mitigate COVID-19 in their facilities. Now, with the access facilities, again, because of the intergovernmental agreement, we don't have that specific contract. This is where with the state, they have the oversight. So, I'd like to defer to Marie Keoni on that specific question. If we are notified of the passing of a member and if it is COVID-19, Honorable Slater, I do not have an answer for that. Marie?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the committee. This is Marie Keoni. The access-registered facilities, in the case of Winslow Campus of Care, they are, they are, a majority of the members there, their residents in the facility are Medicare-eligible. With that and with the Medicaid services, they have to comply with CMS guidelines and then also CDC guidelines. So, when a member passes, they will inform the case manager. And then, we do have four different offices that we have on Navajo Nation, Chinley, Fort Defiance, Delcon, and Tubus City. So, we have a total of about 37 case managers that we have on board. And when a member deceased, the facility will contact the case manager because there's further case management casework that needs to take place. Entries have to be made into the system. So, yes, we are made aware of those. Thank you.
Chair, I have a follow-up.
Go ahead, Honorable Slater.
Thank you. So, I mean, to me, it seems very specific, or you specifically stated now, or the program has specifically stated, that it is informed when those who are under its case management services pass on at these facilities. And it seems like there was a tremendous number of people who passed on at Winslow Campus of Care. Was that concealed from the program?
From the program?
At Winslow Campus of Care? Or was the program made aware and didn't believe that there was anything to question or look further into there?
Thank you for the question, Honorable Slater. This is Marie Keoni again. In response, we were aware of the increased reports. So, we did address it with our tribal Altechs office with the access. And since they have oversight of the facilities, so it wasn't concealed by Winslow Campus of Care. You know, they did make us aware and we did notice that there was quite a number of cases. So, it was, you know, we did report it and we couldn't, it couldn't, it's not something that can be reported as a quality of care issue due to the public health emergency with the COVID. So, but it was addressed and we were, we did inform our access office. Thank you.
Ms. Keoni, so you report, what did you report to access? And then also in parallel, what did you report within your chain of command?
Thank you for the question, Honorable Slater. The report that we made to access Altechs office was that we had seen a number of, or an increased number of that's at Winslow Campus of Care. And if there was, if they were aware of any reports, and then also, they were aware, they do Winslow Campus of Care in accordance with its guidelines is required to make a report to the local county health department. And they did do that. And then also, they did work with Arizona Department of Health Services, which is responsible for certification of facilities. So, that's what happened. Thank you.
Honorable Slater, is that your question?
Yeah, I guess in terms of the case management responsibilities, what, does the program have any responsibility to ensure that there's notifications to the families or the, I guess, the residents' representatives, you know, who are under your case management? I think that was a big issue, where families were not notified that their family members had passed on and then they weren't notified also that they had passed on because of COVID-19.
Thank you, Honorable Slater, for that question. The case, as part of the case management process, yes, the facility is required to inform the case manager as well as the families. And in most cases, when the case managers are informed, usually they contact the family members as well. Thank you.
So, do we know that for all of those residents or those individuals who received case management from the Department of Family Services and they passed on, that their families or representatives were notified by our case managers? Or that our case managers followed up with the facilities to confirm that the families had been notified that their relatives had passed on due to COVID-19? And that this was being done in a timely manner?
With the four offices, there are supervisors and with the information once received from the facilities, the case managers, like I said, would make that contact with the family? Or if in some case-
What do you mean would? I mean, I'm asking, did it happen? Has it happened for all of those who have passed on under the case management of the Navajo Nation?
I don't have that number. I would have to consult with the supervisors as to, you know, before we enter the information into the system, we have to confirm the death. So, you know, and there is usually confirmation with the family or the facility to to make sure that confirmation's done before the entries are made into the system. Thank you.
How many members under Department of Family Services case management with Arizona, or with Altechs have passed on due to COVID-19?
Thank you for the question. We do have a list of, we do have numbers, but in most cases, it's like a confidentiality thing where, you know, we are aware, when an individual goes into the hospital, like from nursing homes, we may, we may know what the cause of death was. But as far as those individuals that are living at home, it's hard to do that. But with the nursing home specifically in the Winslow Campus of Care issue, it was like around 36 that was due to COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keoni. I'm asking about all of your members. So, you say that 82% are providing services in their homes and presumably, most of those are located on the Navajo Nation, receiving health care through IHS or 638 facilities. And their contraction of COVID-19, and then sadly, if they pass on, is being recorded within the IHS or 638 system. But for those members who are receiving care, you know, off the reservation at these facilities, you know, some of them are on the reservation. And it says, what, 15% of them are placed in nursing homes there? How many of them have passed on, not just for Winslow Campus of Care? And then, do you have an estimate for those that, you know, are within, are receiving care in their homes? I mean, I know that the program has to be made aware of when someone passes on because they're no longer presumably going to be providing case management services for them. And there should be a notification on whether it was COVID-related. I don't think that that's covered by confidentiality right now.
Thank you for the question. This is Marie. Yes, we do have numbers for the nursing home. It's easier to- to, to get the number, the number of cases of decedents that have passed due to COVID. However, like I said, with the the individuals that are receiving services at home, we try to get the information, but a lot of times, you know, we, even with hospitals that we work with, it's always a HIPAA issue. So, and then case managers try to get information from the family, but a lot of times they're told that's, you know, something that they would like to keep private. So, we do have some numbers, but again, that's with each of the offices.
So what is the number for the Navajo Nation that you have right now?
I don't have that offhand, I'm sorry.
When, when you were told that you were going to be presenting before the committee today, what were you told that you were going to be presenting on?
The agenda that I saw had elderly group home. And-
Thank you. So it wasn't related to any of the COVID-19 issues? It was just a general overview? That's what you, that's what you understood?
Yes.
Chair, can I ask a couple of comments?
Honorable Slater, go ahead.
Thank you. This is, I think, no secret that the committee has been discussing this issue, that this was the point of the reports today from the Division of Social Services and the Department of Health. The issue has certainly been elevated to the Office of the President and Vice President and to our division directors. And I think that it, I don't want to say it was a waste of the committee's time, but we were presented just very general overview information about what services the Department of Family Services provides. And there was real obscuring of what the oversight and responsibilities may be for the Department of Family Services with respect to individuals that are placed into these nursing home facilities, the members that are placed in there. And I think that what we want as a committee and as a government is for proactive programs. We want our programs to be seeking the best care for our citizens, for our constituents, for our family members, for our relatives. And what we're presented with is not a very proactive picture by the Division of Social Services. It's not proactive in the information that was provided to the committee today. It is not proactive in the data collection. It's not proactive in trying to find out, well, if there are HIPAA issues, obviously access is tracking this data. You know, that information is conveyed to access. Why aren't our case managers receiving the same access from access? Are there things that the committee can do to support the program if they are denied the ability to get this very critical information, right? Because if we're realizing, okay, in our home healthcare facilities, which make up 82% of the members under the, the IGA, are we seeing protocols in place there to mitigate spread? Did we see higher rates of infection? And sadly, folks passing on due to COVID-19 within this category of service and case management? And, you know, demographic within the Navajo Nation. In combating COVID, it's important to look at these things. You know, the CDC recognized that there's a very high possibility for transmission of COVID within our nursing home facilities. And therefore, they issued the memorandum for the facilities to develop these plans. And it seems that there, at the outset, there was a request by the program to do some sort of monitoring. But when it comes to follow-up and also reporting to oversight, and that is the Health Education Human Services Committee, the Office of the President and Vice President, and, you know, just the council more broadly, you could also say local officials. You know, this was not an issue that has been raised to the committee thus far within our own government. And it wasn't until there was the Navajo Times article that this was elevated. I've I'm deeply concerned that it took a journalist to raise how big an issue this is. And I still feel like we're not hearing any urgency from the program or any sort of proactive measures on how we can rectify the situation and hopefully prevent unnecessary death in the future. And this is a really difficult topic to discuss traditionally, and I don't know how to do this otherwise, but I'm just talking from my gut here. But, you know, I, I feel like we shortchanged the representatives and the families of those who are in our nursing care case management system. And you know, nobody in the Navajo Nation government is responsible for these people's deaths, our citizens' deaths, in my estimation. I don't think anyone's directly responsible. And I think that, you know, the program manager has provided the best information to her ability back to the committee. But as a government, we are culpable, you know, we need to, to be responsible. Whether, you know, we're directly operating facilities or not, we need to be responsible to our people. And that starts with being proactive. The program expressed that they saw an uptick. They moved through access, and I'm going to request that all information that was conveyed to access to the county health departments, or sorry, I should say to the state regarding COVID-19 and the IGA and the monitoring and the case management, and to the county health departments be provided to the committee. And I think I'll motion to accept the report soon and include that therein, but Ms. Martinez, please include that. So there was a recognition that there was an issue, but it was not elevated to the committee. And it wasn't really clear how it was elevated within the Navajo Nation government within the executive branch. You know, the fact that we don't have a consolidated number across each of these offices for how many individuals have passed on due to COVID-19 under our case management by itself demonstrates how serious we were taking this data issue and how seriously we were taking, tracking this for our members and their representatives and their families. And that says it right there, that we don't even know it exists at an office or agency level, but it doesn't exist for the whole Navajo Nation. And to me, that means that it was not integrated into the Navajo Nation's public health response to COVID-19. So, you know, what's done is done. You can't bring life back. But what we need to do now, and this is our mission now, you know, in partnership, this is not just oversight, chastising the committee, I mean, the program, in partnership, help us with recommendations on how we can improve the communication process to families so that they're not blindsided or misled. How we can improve, you know, whether it's elected leadership or program leadership, speaking with the state to make sure that the highest levels of care are actually being provided to our citizens in these off-reservation facilities? Now, we need that, and we need that in writing. But unfortunately, with the Division of Social Services, the status, the what would you say, the, the, oh, the modus operandi thus far has been, we accept no responsibility or culpability. We will dangle something over here and give general presentations to the committee. And we will not be proactive or respect when the issue, the committee brings up an issue. The Department of Family Services has an issue right now with our shelters. And we've been petitioning to the program to meet us halfway, at least acknowledge that there's a problem. The state, accountants, everyone has acknowledged, with the exception of the program, that there's a billing issue when it comes to receiving state and Navajo Nation funding. And instead of respecting oversight's analysis, respecting the state's analysis, respecting the shelter's analysis, it's just been to turn a blind eye and say that, and not acknowledge it as an issue. And I, I pray to God and the holy people that that is not what the, that is not what the response will be with this issue. You know, on the one hand, we have people going to DV shelters, and we're not adequately propping up our shelters with the fiscal resources to deliver those services at the most vulnerable times of their lives. On the other hand, we have people sadly at the end of their lives. And those families who are also in incredibly vulnerable circumstances, who need communication, love and support from their government, they didn't get it. So let's make sure that doesn't happen in the future. Thank you, Chair.
Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Slater.
Chair.
Oh, thank you, Honorable Slater. Ado Sisili. Honorable Edison Wanika, you can have the teleconference floor.
Okay, I will go ahead and second Slater's motion, but I want to ask a couple of questions and then I want to also make a statement. I really appreciate what Slater is saying, and I fully agree with him. My question has to do with, uh, monitoring visits, nige, are those scheduled? Because I work with, try to help the Northern Land Nursing Home and then also Ani Wanikas. And going there, talking to them and visiting with them, I kept, I kept being told, you know, that they were low on funding, they weren't getting any response from Window Rock. And sometimes I had to come in and ask questions. And so I'm just concerned because I think sometimes these contracts are late. And then they're always submitting invoices and they're waiting for their money. Why is this just like that almost on a continuous basis? It's a real concern because when you run a program, your responsibility is for the people. That's the main responsibility you have to ensure that what your responsibilities are, you follow through with those immediately. Not until there's questions that's presented to you. [speaking Navajo] 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 [speaking Navajo]
Fugashila, Sisili. We have, I recognize the second to Honorable Carl Slater's motion. Ado, your statements will be, should be taken to heart by the administration. Committee members, anybody else? If not, then that opens the floor for questions from the chair. Ms. Regina Yasi, regarding the 93 638 contract, you said it was a three-year contract? And you, you mentioned MOU and contract. And I'm, it wasn't clear if it was a subcontract with the entities. And you weren't clear to basically say that these MOUs or subcontracts were also for three years. But you did state that the daily rate was set in 2019, it was set in 2020, and it was set for 2021. So that kind of, it's in a way troubling. Because in other, other 638 contracts, your office and the division director is very adamant about not resetting the daily rate. So I'm wondering how there is, um-
Especially the ones that live in the northeastern area. Um, the closest um nursing home is the one in Blandy. Or the two, that's in uh Farmington and Bloomfield. So that's where um they usually prefer to have their loved ones placed there and that's how they're um usually with with the preference of the family members send a request is made to the state. Thank you.
Mister Chair, this is Deanna Neswakish. Can I just provide some closing remarks, please?
Well, uh, what's really concerning? A program manager not knowing whether New Mexico facilities are part of this report. It's very concerning. And I don't know what you can say to actually influence the committee to we have a continuum. And to go back as Honorable Edison Winika really the issue with ICWA, the issue with domestic violence shelter contracts, and now this. It just seems like the responsibility is this shaken off. I don't know what you can say to convince the committee that uh otherwise, but you can have the floor.
Thank you, Mister Chair and members of the committee. Um, thank you, Honorable Slater Winika um for your um remarks as well. Um, but just um going back to um Honorable Slater's comments for proactive measures um that the division can do. So I have jotted down some areas that I will meet with the team. Um, one of the areas regarding access and to review the um intergovernmental agreement we have with Arizona to see how we can um look at some of the um the questions that were raised. Um, so I do hear the committee. Um, thank you for for that information. I just wanted to provide that. Um, we will start looking at some proactive measures. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Committee members? Any other statements, questions? Going once? Going twice? Three times? Mister Moes, roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Junior.
Delegate Paul Begay votes red.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior votes red. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Delegate Slater red.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes red. Honorable Pernell Halona.
One vote red.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes red. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote red.
Honorable Charlene So votes red. Honorable Edison J. Winika, red. Honorable Edison J. Winika votes red. Chair, vote of zero in favor and five opposed.
Uh, thank you, uh Mister Moes for the roll call. Let the record show a vote of zero in favor, five opposed. The chair not voting in not accepting the report. So we'll go on to the next item. Committee members, I don't know if uh the folks from the Department of uh Education has done with the tribal consultation hearing with the Gallup McKinley County School System. But uh uh, we will uh call them to the floor for their report regarding the prospects of the Hess meeting with the UNM administration. And part of the issue is the rainforest agreement, but that's not the primary. Other primary aspects is the relationships that exist through the Navajo Teacher Education Consortium. Where there is the prospects of UNM being committing to consortium agreement as well.
Okay. Wait, 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 wait.
So we were hoping Miss Rose Graham would be on the call.
Yeah, I'm here. Yat'eh, 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 Mister So. And members of the committee, yat'eh, this is Rose Graham. And um she a Navajo Nation Scholarship Office. And um, I think my boss is still in a meeting. And one of the attorneys from DOJ is supposed to uh also be with us to to listen in. And um the uh, I'm gonna present some data. Mister Chair asked for uh was talking about a meeting with uh the UNM president. And uh, so I offered to provide some data to the committee, so um and if it's not uh what you need, you know, we can always, so it's preparing the committee to to talk to UNM. Um, and then one of the issues is the rainforest housing, so um I am asking upon advice of legal counsel if we could have this session in executive session.
Committee members.
This is Delegate Slater.
Oh, sit down, go ahead. Honorable Slater, you have the floor.
Thank you. Miss Graham, can you present the attorney that recommended executive session?
Um Alexandra Kinsella. She's in another meeting with um the uh on school issues. She's, so she's not available and she's asked um uh Mister Rice to be part of this meeting.
Chair, or Miss Martinez or Mister Moes, have you received information from Miss Kinsella regarding this issue and the request for executive session?
Honorable uh Honorable uh Vice Chair, how do committee members? The um Miss Graham, halea, they convened the meeting. And I was invited to participate and Honorable Slater was uh also invited uh and oh, um was it Miss Bobroff also attended as well as Mister Haven? Miss Graham, uh.
Yeah, I didn't hear, I didn't hear uh Dana, but I did um I think it was uh Ron Haven is the person we've been dealing with.
Uh, Mister Chair, uh, this is Ron Haven. Yeah, I'm not feeling too well today, but if you could just bear with me, um originally Dana had um uh reassign Loreen um to try to uh uh sit in on some of these meetings, but I am certainly available today uh to sit in on your executive session. I I did uh catch uh some of the uh remarks that that were made by Department of Justice insofar as some of the issues have been identified so far insofar as the contract with the UNM. I certainly will be available uh to sit in with you in the executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Haven. Appreciate that.
Chair, this is Delegate Slater. Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead, uh Honorable Slater.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Miss Graham. The the point of my question about receiving any information was just so that the lawyers could speak to the need for executive session and Miss Graham wouldn't have to reinterpret or interpret or or convey things that um, I don't know, might put her in an awkward position. So the the other aspect is that we're we're all aware, this is a very public issue at this point, and there are a lot of people who are very vested in knowing what the nation is doing. And so that's why when our attorneys can very clearly delineate what will be, what needs to be conveyed in executive session and what can be conveyed publicly so that we're accurately, you know, informing our citizens. With that said, it's twelve fifty and I believe that we have scheduled a work session for one PM. And Chair and Committee, my proposition is that we roll this report over to our next regular session or regular committee meeting so that we can afford it the appropriate time that it deserves. Um, and if not that, then we could conduct a a special session or just a specific work session on this issue um with Miss Graham, with DOJ, um with the President's Office and with our attorneys. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Slater, committee members. And and basically, uh, I think we do need um other folks on the call. We are spread thin today. And so in in that aspect, uh at the end of our um the um work session uh this afternoon, we'll we will talk about either a special session. Our next regular committee meeting is March or April uh February twenty fourth. And and we're at the seventeenth and it's, and it may be um, too much of a time lag. So that would be an item to think about. We do have February twenty second and February twenty third that aren't holidays. Eight, what eight only, uh, committee members, so Miss Graham, I guess, uh but uh, so Honorable Slater, the, is that a motion to roll it over?
Yeah, I guess, we could also conclude the meeting and wouldn't it automatically roll over to the next um agenda if if we don't do anything further on it? Or is that just a decision?
Yes, we could.
Okay, um well, would it be premature to motion to adjourn, but also issue a directive or request the Chair to roll over this report to our next regular committee meeting?
Let's do
I just don't think we need to vote on uh on rolling it over. We all know we're gonna roll it over.
Okay, in in this case, uh, let's just, to make it clear, let's uh some key players in the discussion are not available. So the Chair is open to a motion to defer this item to the next meeting, whether it be a special meeting or a regular meeting of the Hess Committee. And we'll go to a vote. We still have items uh to look at before we look at adjournment.
Chair Salona, make a motion, move that, refer that to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Sitna Ash. Honorable Pernell Halona makes the motion to defer it to the next uh meeting.
I'll second.
Second, by Honorable Carl Slater. Chair, Mister Leonard Moes, roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Junior.
Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay, he votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Halona votes green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Chair, vote of three in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, uh uh Mister Moes. So this item is deferred with a vote of three in favor, two committee members not voting and the Chair not voting. Um, Miss Graham, uh uh, thank you for exiting the other meeting to basically a- address this committee and uh, listen to a heads up but from um Ms. Martinez. Thank you.
Thank you, committee.
Okay, we go to item six, old business there being none. Item seven, new business being none. Uh, go to number eight, close of meeting. Announcement. And if not, then uh a adjournment. Do I hear a motion? Uh, Honorable Slater motions?
Second, Delegate Begay.
Uh, second by um Honorable Paul Begay Junior. There being uh no uh discussion or debate, all in favor. Mister Moes, roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Junior.
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona.
One vote green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, adjourned at twelve fifty seven PM.
Thank you, committee members, so almost immediately we'll have to call back in. But I'm gonna sign off for a few minutes.
I'm sorry, this is Mrs. Gray again, um honorable members of the board. Uh, I was in line at Wells Fargo and um I got cut cut off in reference to who and how, who the individual was going to be that's going to be reaching out and how they would reach out to me. I'm sorry, may I please have that restated?
And what was the, we understand, we understood that you were questioning the committee on the school board election, Mrs. Gray?
Um, I would like to just get clarification on school board, um yes, elections as well. If I can explain that in more detail, I guess, to whom is going to be contacting me?
And basically, our legislative staff, Ms. Beverly Martinez. When issues are put on the agenda, then she is the person that reaches out.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Mister Chair, um, the Vice Chair wanted to meet with her regarding this um first, before being put on the agenda.
Oh, yes. So uh Honorable Carl Slater will uh, Ms. Gray, please.
Oh, sure, I
Go ahead.
Sorry, Ms. Martinez is not accurate to say what I, what I said. I said that this Gray needs to identify whether she is approaching the committee in her personal capacity or as a member of the board. And then if she's doing it as a member of the board, it's best to do it via either board action or through the board chair. And that is, you know, the, the board has an organizational relationship with the committee. But if Ms. Gray is doing it in some sort of individual capacity, then she may approach the committee directly, but on an Abomination Council website, there are the committee advisors that are identified to get in contact with the committee. There's also us individually as delegates and then there's the respective delegate for Ms. Gray who can also make contact to the committee on the issues that she may have. Right. We, we need to be careful because of the membership of Ms. Gray. So whether this is specific board related or if it's in an individual capacity.
Thank you, Mister Slater, for that clarification. I am, um, again, I do appreciate that clarification. And I am drawn between, like you're saying, um, thin ice of I I guess being a constituent, concerns from a constituent standpoint as well as uh, well, I I guess with this situation, I would like to address it and just get further information on this topic as a constituent. Again, you know, it just sort of draws that fine line between uh myself being a constituent as well as being part of the Chair with the Navajo Nation Board of Education. So I'm just trying to reach out to, you know, get a little bit more guidance on different, on on the situation without crossing the lines and um, I I guess, just overstepping my boundaries as a Navajo Nation Board of Education. So um, I guess if I could meet or speak with one of the members to get more guidance.
And um Ms. Gray, you certainly could bring it up at the Navajo Nation Board of Education.
Um
Certainly, and certainly that could come forward through the board.
Okay, um, I I guess I can go ahead and do that. And I did, um, you know, this is a topic that I had been pondering. Um, uh, not pondering, but it has been a pressing question for me. I did bring this situation up. Um, I I believe maybe one, a few times, but I haven't been I I guess given a direct answer or a direct, a direction to go with this on how we would address. Um, I apologize for the last meeting that um Hissy had um with the Navajo Nation Board of Education's work session in reference to revisiting the, I believe, the Title X. If not the Title X, please correct me if I'm wrong, but in reference to school board, um uh, I I can't remember the exact work session that Navajo Nation Board of Ed as well as um uh, uh, Hissy had the work session within December. Um, unfortunately for unforeseen events, um, I did, I was unable to um, attend that work session as I had to tend to the loss of my mom.
Um, Ms. Gray, certainly the committee expresses its condolences. And wish you um the best as far as um, dealing with the loss. Um the committee basically um, in in regard to the school board elections, the Navajo Nation School Board elections, the Winderock District Court basically refrained the committee from going forward with the school board elections. And there have been supplemental orders and uh, the committee is waiting um a final order from the Winderock District Court wherein they said they would issue the final order on in the Mar, in the month of March twenty twenty one. So that's basic. And as 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 such, then um I hope that answers your question.
Um, thank you very much. Um, and I do appreciate the extended condolences um, in reference to my mom. It's been trying after living and providing for her for thirty years. And um, i- it's been I guess a devastating time for us all, but um, you know, we, I continue to try to move forth with her teaching and as an individual that she instilled in me. And yes, um, it it's giving me some clarity in the, in those areas. Thank you very much. And you all have a wonderful day and thank you for all you do for our Navajo people.
Thank you, Miss Gray. You have a wonderful day too. Uh, committee members? Uh, Mister Moes?
Yes, sir.
Did we do the roll call vote on adjournment?
Yes, sir, we did. Why, um four zero.
Okay, thank you. And the Chair not voting, we are adjourned.
Chair, are we still on the same number calling back?
Yes. I'm gonna hang up too and then I'm gonna call back in. Gotta let the phone cool down. See you in a bit.
I'm here, Mister Moes. It did.
Okay, um committee, we could get started with the beginning of the work session and wait for Chair to return. I wanted to ask him if he wanted me to get going um while he attended to the matters he needed to attend to. Do we wanna wait? Well, committee members, it's one oh